And according to the open meeting law, the board states for the record that this meeting is being recorded by NORcam and may be recorded by other local media. Does Rose want to reply?
The pledge leads to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Board member reports. Mr. Larry. And we'll do all the new business at the same time.
Okay. First of all, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to acknowledge that I wasn't here at the beginning of the last meeting. You know, I had a family situation I had to deal with. So a couple of things. One, I just wanted to, had I made it here, I would have mentioned, I'm not sure if Mr. Massey did, but the Veterans Day events that took place on the Common. We got lucky with the weather again. It was a little breezy, but it was wonderful. But it was a wonderful ceremony, acknowledging our appreciation of all the veterans who have served our community and our country, from our community. And read the gubernatorial proclamation, Mr. Massey read the town's proclamation on behalf of the board, and we sent the best wishes from the members of the board who couldn't make it. But one of the things I really wanted to note, make note of, and I'm sure you're pretty touched by this too, is that they included a bunch of children this year. They heard a story right there in front of the memorial, in the middle of the ceremonies. It was fantastic, and I hope they incorporate that on an annual basis because it was, again, I've been doing this a long time. It was fantastic. You know, so the way that they progressed through everything like they normally would have, but when they included the children in it, it was even better. It was a fantastic addition. So congratulations to the Veterans Committee and Mr. Stratton and TJ and his first event here. They did a fantastic job with that. The other thing was, again, I wasn't able to be here for the joint appointment of the Community Planning Commission. So I just wanted to congratulate Mr. Sheehan on his appointment, wish him well in his tenure there. He briefed until May, and then he runs again for reelection, and I just wanted to acknowledge Mr. Corelli, Martin, and McCullough for their willingness to step forward. We had four great candidates to choose from, and it wasn't a bad decision to be made. I certainly appreciate, I suppose we all do, their willingness to step forward. So again, thank you for your indulgence on that. As far as since that time, the senior Thanksgiving dinner was held at Hillview. Ultra Sheik did a fantastic job, but Lidda and Brad Jones and the Senate. Once again, pulled off a wonderful day for our community, sense of community. They had 240 people come, which was one of the largest events we've had in years, and did a fantastic job. It was a wonderful meal, and wonderful to see everybody get together, sense of community. And again, also going to acknowledge the new Boston Post Kane recipient, Mary Trullo. She's now our most senior citizen in the community, and she was there with her family, and it was great to see Mary. She's been a longtime resident of the community, and wonderful to have her and her family there. Yesterday was the tree lighting ceremony on the Common, and what a turnout. I just, again, wanted to acknowledge, first of all, the chamber for sponsoring it, but as importantly, the Minute Militia, the Historical Commission, Historical Native Aquarium Society. They have David Tavern open, where people can go through and see the Rufus Border Room, which again, is an open offer to enough. It's just a wonderful treasure that we have there, those buildings, David Tavern, Partner House, all those other inside of the buildings that have been moved there by the Minute Militia over the years. They're all open, serve hot chocolate, and all of the volunteers in each one of those buildings, all telling the story of what occurred, what would happen to that building, what our ancestors who were here before us contributed to the community. And again, just a wonderful thing, so they did a great job. So to all the volunteers, thanking the TPW for putting up the lights and all the rest, the fire department for getting Santa Claus there on time and safely, was important. And it was just a wonderful event, and several hundred people participated. And I know that the volunteers, what I heard from all the volunteers that I've spoken to that, how excited they were towards the end of the evening, end of the day, as to how many people had come through, and how, the amount of interest that everybody had in the buildings, in the facilities, and the U.S. of the Taker Place Store. But yeah, just another wonderful event that we have to bring the community together. And lastly, I just want to remind people that North Reading Fire Department has their Toys for Tots collections. They have the receptacles right outside the fire station, so if you want to participate, say 24/7, you can leave the gifts there. And again, our firefighters do a great job of helping those children in the community who have been very generous in years past and the Congress people that we have said. So, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much.
Mr. Massey?
No, I think Steve summed up a lot of my last month as well. I didn't go to a few of those events, but that was put very eloquently. I have known the business.
Steve started telling the Friday.
No, I'm going to save my comments for transportation, which we're going to hear
about today, which is most important. I remember that.
I just have a housekeeping matter. So we preliminarily scheduled a strategic planning meeting for the 18th. However, I think we were a bit ambitious during the Thursday before Christmas.
As I was told by certain members of my family regarding that night with what...
So there was suggested Christmas Eve that you go, you attend that?
I'm suggesting that, you know, having a place to stay is more important than the select work. So I think also, we, you know, I'd like to reschedule that, but also I do think there is a silver lining, that we have a, we were going to conduct a joint meeting in early January with the Finance Committee and School Committee, and I know a lot of the ideas we discussed at financial planning needed us to get some information from those committees. And I think, is CPC also going to be at that one?
I'm not sure. They might be. They certainly would be welcome.
So I feel like we might be able to gather answers from there to take back to the drawing board. So if we did the meeting maybe right after that, it might, that's the silver lining to have them to change it. So, and what I'll do is though, if you'll permit, I'd rather wait. Also, Mrs. Gonzalez is sick to the point where she couldn't even call me back. She had to text me today. So, you know, when Leanne doesn't, can't talk, I mean, you know she's sick. So if it's okay, I would like to set, wait to reschedule for two weeks from now when she's here, just so we don't have to reschedule again if she can't make it.
Do you want to make just one comment? Is, it sounds like you were saying, do the strategic meeting after the combined meeting?
Yes.
The only reason why I think we should flip that around would be because we haven't coalesced on our objectives yet, and it might be helpful to go into that meeting where we're a little bit more on solid ground.
Well, why don't we?
Just think about it.
Why don't we think about it, and then when we reschedule, we'll just talk about it? Okay?
Yeah, just something for you to think about.
And have we put dates out for the joint meeting yet?
Mr. Goberdo?
We have the 8th of January. Wednesday, January 8th is the date we're looking at. So we would have our first regular meeting of the new year on Monday, January 6th, for the board's first and third Monday policy, and then the date that had been identified for a joint meeting would be Wednesday, January 8th. Expect that that would be at the distance learning lab, and it would probably be in the forum for one of our, I think one of the meetings we got a lot of positive feedback on with multiple boards, in posted meetings for purposes of discussing the budget.
The 6th and 20th, those first and third Mondays of January, just so you know, I think the 20th is my end date.
Yeah, so we're going to have to try to either, we're going to have to try to find a date that we, I'm just not sure when yet, but we can talk about that.
Sure. Put a meeting schedule on the next agenda.
Yeah, that's fine.
So, public comment?
Kevin Mackey, 18 Adams Streets. So the override didn't pass last year, and I believe now we're just about six months in. So I wasn't sure if on the town administrator's report, we could have maybe some type of update of any cuts that were actually had to be made that the town talked about. That was it, just.
Okay.
We can, we can address that, but I'm going to give him two weeks, just to put it together, unless he wants to say something on the fly.
I can, I'm happy to give a quick answer. I mean, they were, I mean, and I'll speak to all of the municipal department budgets. I'm not, you know, quite as close to the school department budget, because those are decisions that are outside of my purview. But in terms of the municipal departments, folks may remember, we had two columns in the budget. One was the, within the Proposition Two and a Half Limit column, and that was what was going to be funded. And then there was override amount, which was above and beyond that. And so there were certain items that were required to be, that were reduced by virtue of the second column not being approved. So we didn't go ahead and make cuts to any budget after the town meeting. Those decisions were all made the night of town meeting. So for example, one of those reductions was a lower than what was requested police department budget, particularly overtime. A secondary one was a similar issue for the fire department as well, although we did make a transfer in at October town meeting, if I remember correctly. That's one change that did happen. Again, those are all town meeting approved decisions. There were a series of positions that were vacant and that we had not filled, that ended up being eliminated from the budget. So the grant writing position is one that we've talked about, for example, for, basically for all departments. There was a professional level position in the Department of Public Works that had not been funded, and now is not funded in this current fiscal year's budget. So in terms of the cuts, to be clear, those cuts, the decisions were all made when town meeting made its votes on, I think it was June 10th was the date of town meeting. You know, what is happening since then is the finance director and I are keeping a very close eye on expenditures, on purchase orders, and monitoring budgets. And we do expect that in areas where we had to make other reductions that didn't maybe result in a service being eliminated or a position being eliminated, we know that there's a possibility that a department that maybe previously was able to turn back a little bit of money, the margins might be a lot closer. So we're going to be monitoring that as the year goes on. But to be clear, you know, the decisions about the reductions were all reflected in the upcoming town meeting budget.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone online, Mr. Goberdo?
Not that I can see, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. What agendas, I nailed the next one, it was kind of...
So the gift for the North Reading Fire Department is purely an oversight that we had the agenda item on tonight's meeting agenda. The chief had made very clear he was not going to be able to be here this evening, so we'll put that on for December 16th. I do want to, you know, there's some great donations that were made to the department by residents who were impacted by the brush fires, in recognition of the effort of the fire department, and we look forward to talking more about that on December 16th. There is still a restriction on outdoor burning in place. I have talked with the chief. He's going to revisit that these weeks, depending upon where we're at. So there is a possibility that there could be a change in that status, but the outdoor burning restriction that went in place two weeks ago does remain in place, as does the declared state of emergency that the board filed two weeks ago now. Again, that may be something that gets revisited at the December 16th.
Okay, thank you.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, next item is presentation on...
I'm going to actually stop one second because I feel some people may be here for license renewal, so I want to let them know.
Yeah, please, yep.
So we will not be doing license renewals this evening because there are some for next week. So it was not, it did not make sense to reread all the motions twice for the same exact thing, so we're going to do them all on December 16th at the following meeting. So if you were, if you were here for the license renewal, to see if your license was going to get renewed, or anything like that, I just didn't want you to wade through it and then me talk about that in a half hour, or whenever we got there. So...
Mr. Chairman, through you, I believe someone's here from New England Beverage. Their application is in order to our knowledge, and they would have been recommended for renewal. Simply it'll be taken up with all of the other items on December 16th.
Correct.
So Susan, thank you for attending.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now go ahead. Sorry about that.
That's okay. So I want to turn it over to the Director of Public Services, Lilian Hartman, for a presentation with an update on transportation. Last time, I think we were before the board, was discussing a warrant article for a request for funding, and then a follow-up where we had outlined basically an 18-month plan to take us through June 30th of 2025. Ms. Hartman's able to provide us an update here and a little bit of a projection beyond that with regard to our transportation program. So it's okay, I'd like to turn it over to her. I can run an update if you'd like. Kevin, can we ask you to dim the lights, please? Thank you.
Your own dude.
Could you dim the other? There we go. Perfect.
That one on screen.
How's that?
That up.
That's good.
All right. Well, I wanted to start by saying it's been a privilege for me to support a really dedicated volunteer committee over the past two years focused on transportation. I want to acknowledge all the folks who've given their time as committee members or as volunteer drivers, and especially June Story, who helped to found our volunteer driver program and then used it as a client before she passed away in November. There are currently three openings on the committee, so if you find this topic interesting or important to you, please consider applying on the town website or let the town administrator's office know. And the next few slides, I'm hoping to take only five minutes. First, they'll show what rides North Reading residents are currently using, then the rides they say they need and want, and the cost of providing those services now with some future options. So the first slide shows as the senior population in North Reading has grown, so has our demand for rides. With a big dip for COVID, we're back on track with an upward curve. And we'll get back to details about each type of ride on the next slides, but this is the general trend. You can see that the beat is rising. Next slide. Over the past few years, there's been a transition in the way medical rides are offered. The town now coordinates 50 or more medical rides per month through volunteers. Those rides are previously covered by our transit authority. And we received the warrant article funds from town meeting to launch this service and to support it, and since then, a state grant has fully supported the volunteer ride program. I want to highlight at the bottom in bold comments from our committee that besides just seeing the numbers of rides offered, it's important to realize that our non-driving residents are impacted with a sense of relief that they can schedule medical appointments whenever and wherever they need it, and know they'll be able to get there because this ride program exists. So next slide. The growing need for rides that we saw on that first slide has been met by a growing capacity with the town. So in the past year, the town purchased a used 15-passenger van that you see at the ribbon cutting ceremony, and also through a partnership with our transit authority, received a wheelchair ramp minivan in August. Those Mastock grants that support our volunteer medical program also cover additional hours for drivers. So our paid staff drivers, the town has continued to fund at a cap of 35 hours per week year over year, and we're offering more service than that thanks to grants. I'll say too, last year, the one-way trips per month on the senior van were 444 per month, and this year, so far in this fiscal year, they're looking more like 600 plus. Okay, so you've seen what we're offering for rides, but what do people say they want? And we found pretty good correspondence here. The town ran a survey of all households in January of 2024. It was mailed with the town census. There were over 1,500 responses to the survey overall, which is better than a 20% response rate. The most important good news is that 88 to 89% of households reported that they have all their transportation needs met, but there is 10% or a little more who have some unmet transportation needs. You can see the most common request, if people need help getting rides, it would be for medical appointments, and 107 households indicated that. 53 indicated grocery shopping and errands. And the next slide. So this was a survey of all residents, and by the time we got to question three, only a third of respondents were still writing in their answers. But of the 500 who responded in general, for the future, would you like North Reading to investigate options for public transportation? About 350 said yes and wrote in various comments. The most common keywords in what people wrote in were a local or public bus and MBTA connections, which we currently don't have through public transport. So next slide. So based on the survey results and what we're hearing from volunteer drivers and, you know, anyone who's giving feedback, the transportation committee set goals for the upcoming year, also based on their charge. One of the first things that they're charged with doing is spreading the word about what already exists. So if you are a person who needs medical rides, or if you're a person who can give your time to help a neighbor, you can sign up to be part of that volunteer ride program by calling the senior center. This is their club. Please call the senior center. The next most important thing is to plan for financial sustainability in a tough budget year. Number three and four, to continue or sustain the medical rides that we've been able to cover, and the local shopping and social, the trips people need around town if they're a non-driver. In terms of future expansion, to consider MBTA connections that might be options for us, and to advocate for improved and expanded walkability. There were quite a few write-in comments on that survey about people who might prefer to walk, but they want safety improvements to walk around town. Next slide. So these are very rough numbers. It might look different by the time you get to fiscal '26 budgeting, but I wanted to show approximately what the breakdown has been for the services we provide today. The first chart shows what we think it would cost to sustain today's services, which we're calling expanded, because the town has traditionally and still funds 35 hours a week of paid drivers. It pays for fuel, and since we received these grants and started offering additional services, we've had one-time funding from Mastock and other sources covering more than half of the overall transportation expense for town services. We've applied for funding renewal. We won't hear until January whether those grants come to us again, but if they do, next year we would anticipate town operating costs being a little over $47,000, where today they're at $46,000. And one-time funding approved, we would get about $58,000 from grants to just sustain the same things that are done today. The second chart is something that the committee has been looking at as an alternative service delivery model, and that is to work or partner with our regional transit authority again under their new operating model, which would provide rides through MIVA, or the Merrimack Valley Regional Transit Authority, for local seniors in town, and keep our town-operated vans for the services that MIVA does not cover under its current model. This could potentially reduce the town costs if we still receive grants by about one-third, or save us about $15,000, where services would still be sustained. But this change is not just a money question. So the next slide explains how that service model might be different. So first, today, if you call the senior center for a ride around town, the hours are going to be limited to town hall hours, which is eight to four Monday through Thursday, or eight to one Friday. If we partner more closely with MIVA next year, that could offer earlier morning, later evening, and Saturday service for local residents. MIVA would cover those rides around town from home to the senior center. It would also cover for the first time rides to like the Andover commuter rail station for residents who are 60-plus. And people could get to Salisbury Beach, they just have to stay within MIVA's service territory, which does not cover anything to the east, west, or south of us. So the town would still need to keep our buses in service to cover shuttles between town buildings, any group trips, and to do any backup needed outside of MIVA's territory. So the big change besides cost and hours really, is the way people would need to book rides. So if you look at the phone icon, today, the senior center can book next day and sometimes last-minute rides for people. They can book rides a month in advance if you want to sign up for every gym class, and they can remind riders in person to set up their next rides. They also have that personal touch. When someone no-shows for a ride from home, they will call them, and then their emergency contact, and then the fire department if they need to, to make sure that person's okay. That level of personal service changes if we shift to a regional model. MIVA rides, after you apply and become registered, which might take a few weeks, require two business days' advance notice every time. They can't be booked sort of in recurring series or two, or more than two weeks ahead. It would now require separate calls if you want to reserve lunch at the senior center and a ride to the senior center, which is generally fine, but for some of our folks who need more reminders, who might be a little bit cognitively impaired, it could be a barrier to them continuing to access our services. It would be cost savings for the town. If you look at the global picture though, like from airplane view, it's not like they're making transportation cheaper. It's just that the transit authority can bring in the federal and state transit funds that the town can't receive, so they'd just be using different funds to cover what we already do. And at that point, I'm happy to take questions, and again, I want to say that if you're interested in any of this stuff, or if you have really complicated questions or ideas, join the committee, or send the committee feedback so they can look at it as we continue to talk with MIVA about the future.
Thank you. Mr. Wong, I'll let you speak first, and then I'll open it up.
Yep. So can we go to the first slide, please? Yep. So when you look at the age 60 population, notice that right now, you know, we're looking at about 25% of the people in town are seniors, and it's going to continue to grow as is predicted. So I think the estimates are is that 40% of the people in town in about 10 years will be seniors. Go to the next slide, please. No, next slide. And next slide, sorry. All right. So at the, just for the knowledge of the community, I have been doing surveys of seniors and what their needs are since about 2010. And one of the first surveys we ever did was, we had about 75 people in the room, and I asked, what are the two, what are the biggest issues you have? And it was property taxes and transportation. And that theme of transportation has been going on as long as I can remember. That really got emphasized with our concurrent survey that we did in January 2024. When we asked on the commission of disabilities, what were the biggest issue, was transportation was by far their biggest issue. So when we talk about 88% of the community has their transportation needs all set, let's recognize that 12% of the community is more than likely seniors, and 12%, that's like almost 2,000 seniors of that 4,400-something. There's a significant amount of people that really need transportation. Why do we care about seniors? Because they are benefactors for our schools. They underwrite the schools, they fund the schools, and they are very, very important to keep in our town. So when it comes to transportation, if we want to have fiscal responsibility and support our community, which includes the schools, keeping our seniors in their homes, happy in their homes, in their community bill to get around, is very critical for our fiscal health. And so I am at a point, it's great that you are scrambling, Will, to put together all these different programs and things like that, and I don't know why MIVA suddenly is going to be our friend again, and I'm glad they are. But if, if the world drops out from us, let's say we lose grants, or let's say things don't happen, this is one of those situations where I think we have to like consider funding a... This is one of those situations where I think we have to like consider funding of transportation to be such on high order that it equates to like what we would do for the police or the fire, or anything that's a critical service. Because if we drop our ability to do transportation, we are going to have a ton of people leaving our town. And then when that happens, you know, your schools go down. The chemistry, the organic chemistry that we're in just changes radically. So I'm a huge, strong proponent of supporting transportation in whatever form it is. Lil, I give you tremendous credit for trying to put this all together. But if this falls apart, I think as a community, we have to really step up and do what other communities have done, which is to underwrite and fund transportation options, especially for our seniors, because they absolutely need it. And again, that's 2,000 of the 4,400 that we saw that benefit from this directly. And without it, we have a good chance of them leaving. And if they leave, more than likely, families are coming in. And I'm not against families and kids going to school, but we know there's a cost when that happens. We have to maintain a balance of those demographics. So I'll be saying this as long as I'm on the board, that this is very important. I've been saying it for as long as I've been involved with the community. And I think it's never more so important than it is right now. We can see that when you have a program, people use it, and we need it, and we have to do it. Thank you.
Now, appreciate your presentation. You did a tremendous job. Thank you, Mr. Wallner, for your efforts with the survey. A few questions I would have about the survey or some of the statistics. But all, probably not so important. So I have no comments.
Mr. Larry?
Yep. Head up the numbers here. All right. So the whole program's $106,000, $107,000 a year, of which we've contributed $47,000, $47,000. So again, thank you for your efforts, the transportation committee's efforts, the senior citizens and all the volunteers who are providing these services. And I know firsthand, and I also, just from talking to people who are now availing themselves of the service, they are relieved that it's available. They're also relieved that even on short notice, they're getting service, services that, you know, they're just so appreciative of. The other thing that they're appreciative of, the seniors, is that they don't have to do this necessarily and be a burden on extended families. And I'm not talking to somebody who's in the household, someone who lives out of town, who has to come and transport them and disrupt their families. Of course, this is just a tremendous relief for a number of people that I've spoken to over the last several months, who've been availing themselves of the, of the opportunities that's been presented to them. And word of mouth, it is traveling, it is growing, because I know that the phones are ringing off the hook down at the senior center. And it's just always, it's only going to grow. And, you know, while it may only be 12% of the respondents who may have a need, it's probably far greater, because again, while we had a good response level, we had more people who didn't respond. And a lot of those people who didn't respond are the ones who are in need of services too. And to Richard's point, you're talking about 25% of the population who are 60-plus, and it's growing. So I agree with Richard. Again, Richard's been an advocate of this even before he's been on the board. This is an area which really, the cost at this point is not a lot of money for the level of services that can be provided. There's no doubt that there's a lot of pressures on us to balance the budget. But this is a service which is needed, which is expanding, which is meeting the need. And we should feel some sense of obligation to support it. In all my tenure here, over the last three to five years, this program has really shown through as far as the success, as far as outreach and reaching true members of our community who are truly in need, and providing a service for $100,000 a year. We've been fortunate that there are more than half of us have been funded through grant funding. Again, that comes and goes and ebbs and flows too, so we should be prepared to support it if we can, recognizing that maybe some other services may have to suffer. But it's still a segment of the community which has contributed significantly, from the years, continues to contribute significantly. And we don't provide enough funding for senior services. And we're talking about medical transportation here. We're talking about, you know, getting to the grocery stores and things of that nature for people who are, who are housebound and don't drive. So again, I applaud your efforts and everybody who's been involved. We're going to try and find a way to do it, you know, because if the, if the red valley, you know, doesn't, it's Richard's amazement too, when he mentioned it, like, there were our friends that weren't our friends, now they're friends again and glad they're friendly. But again, can we rely on them? I hope so. But if we can't, we need to be able to fill the void. But this is very enlightening, and I think the public should really pay attention to what's happening with those growth numbers and pay attention to the small cost associated with meeting the needs. And, you know, you've got about 100 people here who are being serviced on a regular basis now, and it's only going to grow. So again, thank you for the information, thank you for the presentation, thank you for the update. Keep talking to us, you know, and I think come back, you know, quarterly or semi-annual basis, and just keep us informed. But if something happens in between, let us know, you know, so the public can get aware of it. Again, thank you. All that you're doing here, this is a great program. And I'm so happy and pleased to see it really taking on a light of its own, succeeding. Thank you again.
Mr. Gobero, do you want to go before me?
No.
No, this is great, and I think there's worthwhile investments, this is one of them, more than worthwhile. And I think it's because, again, I see it more in the estate planning where it's an independence thing, you know? Like you said, a burden, because, I mean, burden also just because not everyone is in a position to help a parent on the fly. You know, unless they own their own business, you can't just be like, hey, I got to go here real quick. But I think it's independence, because also, that generation in particular, I was, my parents are part of it. Like, a lot of them didn't have two drivers. So whoever drove the car dies first, that becomes a significant problem all of a sudden. And now it's like, what do I do? So I think that this is something where, you know, there's things you can say, hey, we really were too tight. This is one where you have to find a solution. Like, failure is not an option for a lack of, you know, just to not put it in cliche form. And I do agree also with Mr. Wallner that something like this, that to me, it's a small token of let me help you out, but could keep someone here paying our property taxes. Small, right? It's like the little thought that counts type stuff. This is something small of like, I was in a bind, and my son or daughter wasn't available. But there's these services in North Reading where they worked, and it was great. And you know what? I felt great about it. And it's something where it's like, you know, every time I get my, that quarterly bill, I'm not happy about it, but it just, it removes the sting a little bit. And then the only thing I'll mention, all the, all the ideas that we could explore are good. The only one I'd say, and I'll just mention it, I mean, to get it, I did a little research on this, and I don't know if you've done, but to get an MBTA bus route, which I think wouldn't even work here, per the MBTA website, a policy objective is to provide, they start looking at whether or not to place one within 5,000 inhabitants per square miles. We have 14, 13 and a half square miles and 14,000 people, so we are, we need another about 100,000 people before the T would even sniff us.
There's a reason why the routes were dropped here years ago.
And so I'm just saying that I, and again, because sometimes I know on this board, we've done it where we research a solution, and then we realize we shouldn't have researched that at all, because of the, hey, it just, when you look at like the base. So I just say that's one objective where it's a good thought, but I think that North Reading is just, you know, I think we're just a ways away. So again, because I was actually kind of shocked. You look it up, and you're like, wow, that's a pretty high barrier. Then I also found out there's only about 152 routes. We have a lot of much larger communities than us that don't even have them.
You're also going to find right now, should you get a route through town or a few stops, your assessment is going to go up far more significantly than a $100, $150,000 investment that you're going to be making
Not to go along the route, but that's why.
To provide the services that we'd be providing anyway. So it's, people who get concerned about assessments through, you know, quasi-state agencies and all the rest, if we can do it the way that we're doing it now,
That'd be best.
It'll be far less, far more intimate as far as the people who are providing the services now. I mean, relationships are being built now between volunteer drivers, our drivers that are on staff, and members of the community. And it's just, again, makes this town more of a community, makes people feel good about living here, staying here, aging here. And to Mr. Studo's point, those of us who are contributing and not using the services feel pretty good about what we're picking, what we're getting for return on our taxes.
And then on the walkability, that's great. We're definitely, we definitely got a lot of ideas on that and how to make it better. We had that really nice video, you know, maybe we can expand. But I do agree with that too, because then even from a standpoint that if you have somewhere that's more walkable, the length of ride goes down, because the ride doesn't become that you got to ride to Market Street or some other community. You got to ride down the street. You can accommodate a lot more people. So that's another thing that works into that. So again, that one is a little bit more ambitious, is going to require a lot more, bigger planning minds than my own, which is not a planning mind when it comes to public concept. But, but yeah, no, I appreciate it. Mr. Gobero, are you going to say?
I think everyone has said. I've said one comment, yeah. So Lil, again, I know you're dealing with the reality of what you're in right now. But I also encourage you to think, what if? Like, if in a perfect world, what would you do to our community, you know, to make it a really good, solid transportation program, based on maybe what other communities are doing? So I know you, you know, you're living within our limitations, but if those limitations were taken away, what would you, what would, what would be the best fit for our community going forward? Doesn't mean we're going to do it, just means that we're thinking about it. And we're trying to come up with a robust program, because part of the problem with people utilizing is we keep changing our programs. And it's really hard for people to keep track of all the changes we've had over the last five, six years. So where there's confusion, they don't, they don't do it. Other communities I know, they've had their transportation program going on for 15, 20 years, probably even longer. People know what it's about, they understand it, and it continues on. So I'm encouraging you not only to live within our world, but also to create a what-if scenario. If you had a chance to change this, to make it perfect, what would you do?
I'm sure a lot of other departments would love to hear you say that.
Yeah. Well, it's, it's, again, this is so critical to, so critical to our community that it's worth, it's a worthy exercise to do if nothing else. And there'll be some benefit from it. That's been my experience in my, my life, corporate life.
Well, thank you for being here. At least you won't hit traffic on the way home.
Thank you, Lil.
Thank you again. Mr. Gobero?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. The next item is to review and affirm the special municipal employee designation for the upcoming calendar year. So this is something that we started doing, I think, back in 2020, which is to formalize our annual review of the board request of special municipal employees. And for anyone who does not know, what this effectively covers is anybody who works for the town and might be drawing a paycheck from more than one job. There are state ethics and other laws that prohibit that unless there are special circumstances. And in the circumstances, and you can see from the listing of the types of positions, these are generally very much part-time or per diem positions, where we have somebody who might be employed in one department, looking to help out with their available time in another department. So for example, we might have somebody who is working part-time in one department and wants to help out as a crossfire, just for example. A common situation we see is a public school teacher who's looking to help instruct a course in parks and recreation departments. The van driver programs and the program coordinator program, the council on Asian, for example. These are generally folks who might have a full-time position and then fill a part-time role, or might have one or two part-time roles. And in order to make sure we're following the right process, we ask the board to review it each year. Before we bring it to you, we have the human resources director check with each department to determine whether there's still a need for the designation. And once that exercise has been completed, we'll bring it to you for an annual vote. I think it's, I think we're all sort of torn by it. And I don't think we love having to be in a situation of designating special municipal employees. We often find that there are positions that we struggle to fill because of the part-time or per diem nature of them, where we have existing employees who are willing to step in and by taking, making this designation, that allows us to do it. And I do want to thank the many people who work for us as needed. Maybe they're not necessarily working a career position, but they're filling in here or there to help us out in one or more ways. Again, because we're able to do this. You know, we talked about what it takes to deliver services here in town, and I think everybody has the familiarity of the full-time, you know, employee, police, fire, EPW, or public schools. But we also know that there are a number of dozens of part-time employees in a variety of positions. And of course, the many volunteers here. So this designation is an important component to allow us to continue to provide right services. I do believe there was a motion.
Any questions?
All these positions, did, are they making town benefits? You know, I heard 35 hours earlier, I'm just wondering, is it?
If they're over that trigger?
So I'm just going to look to make sure that I answer it accurately. And looking at this, I, the only one that would potentially trigger benefits because of the number of regularly scheduled hours is the public health nurse. That position is not currently held by somebody who is employed in the second position, so the designation wouldn't necessarily affect this. And we've already increased the number of hours for that patient position by definition, I think going back two years ago. The rest are part-time positions. And we generally try to make sure that not only are they officially listed as not benefit eligible, but that we're monitoring how many hours they're working. There are instances where they may end up working more hours than on paper would make them benefit eligible, but that's usually infrequent. So we really try to tightly control that so that the positions are not benefit eligible. Now, in the case, and I'm just going to, I'm sort of making up an example, but I think it tells the story. We might have a summer program instructor or coach. So working in that position, they're not getting benefits, they're just getting paid an hourly rate. But they are, the other 180 days of the year, a full-time North Reading public school teacher where they're drawing benefits. So hopefully that provides a little bit of context.
The public health nurse, is that, what is that role?
So there's a few components to go with it. The first is statutory, which is infectious disease control. So there is a state online program that is an interface from usually medical professionals, hospitals, where the information with regard to potential contagious disease is reported back to the local board of health. And that requires investigation and follow-up by an employee here, so in this case, it's the public health nurse. So that's kind of the fundamental component of it. When we're running vaccine clinics, we usually are using a contractor at this point in time, but she may be playing a role facilitating that and advising people as well. It's rare, but when an issue happens, you know, during the course of the workday, and an employee needs, you know, some level of medical insight, and she's available to them if need be as well. And then there's sort of the more broader, I guess, public health component of it, right? So programming, where she was an integral part of putting together the health fair that we had that was very successful last year, intended to try to put out a message with regard to public health-related issues. We had to cancel it this year, but we are looking to reschedule it again for the spring. But that's sort of a quick answer for the public health nurse. And I will say, Mr. Messi, it's a really important question, because you may probably recall, going back to the pandemic, we had a board of health member who, because we couldn't get anyone to work as a public health nurse, she was a volunteer board of health member, serving as the town's public health nurse. That's where this started. She is still a board of health member, but is not working as a public health nurse anymore. That health role is held by, I believe, a 22-hour-a-week employee at this point, who I don't, don't think has any other municipal board.
That was funded by COVID funds, correct? Originally, that was originally a COVID hire?
I believe we were using COVID for the hours above the baseline that we had. So we had a long time public health nurse who was working a very small number of hours, and we had increased that. And I think at the time, it's a little hazy, but we used COVID funding initially. Now it's funded through the taxpayers' budget. Now it's funded through the taxpayers' budget.
So it's interfaced with the local nursing home quite a bit.
Uh, yeah. Just, uh, to add to that, two things. One, there is also a liaison that happens with the public school nurses, or there's nurses in the school buildings as well as a nursing home. We have a lot of interaction with folks up at the nursing home. Um, it was an issue during COVID, you know, it's less of an issue because of COVID now, but there's some pretty regular interaction that's happening there. So, cause of the facility that we have. It's up on the hill, it's sort of out of sight, but it's there, and it's a large facility, uh, as well.
Still there anything?
Nope.
Mr. Chair, move on, please. Um, Mr. Chairman, I need to affirm the following positions as having special municipal employee status pursuant to Mass General law, Chapter two sixty-eight. Parks and Recreation, infant toddler instructor, after-school instructor-coach, summer program instructor-coach, summer program director, summer escape and kid connection, summer program and assistant directors, and summer counselors, police department matron, crossing guard, and facilitators for the youth action team, council on aging, van driver and program coordinator, finance committee, finance committee recording secretary, library department substitute library technician, and health department, public health nurse.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Mr. O'Leary.
Aye.
Mr. Waller.
Aye.
Mr. Massey.
Aye.
And the chair is aye. So we will move on to appointments.
Um, Mr. Chairman, through you, uh, we had indicated when the packet was distributed on Friday that we would, uh, wait for, uh, further feedback from the board members until, uh, today. I hope to get, uh, draft out around noon time. It was more like three o'clock, I think, that we sent it out. But I believe Mr. Massey has the motions in front of him, um, for the appointments that were ready. There are any number of appointments that are not yet ready to be acted upon. They'll need to come up on December sixteenth, the next regular meeting. And my suggestion would be, you know, have the motion offered with the candidates' names read, take their recommendation from the liaison, and then do a, a named vote where the name of the selected candidate is stated by each of the board members.
Thank you. Mr. Massey, your consultation ready, please?
Um, yes. I would like to, um, start by discussing my colleagues, uh, something that I know certainly by going through these, uh, when I received the email with the packet. We posted on the newspaper, we put in the transcript, we put out an email blast. Hey, community, we have a lot of open positions, we have vacancies. Meanwhile, these motions all suggest the incumbents. So, you know, you have a lot of people that you asked to come forward. You've got about fifty citizen activation forms, activity forms, sorry. And it seems like we're ignoring them by just reappointing the same people. Um, I'm a little confused in the process, one. But two, is this select board responsible for appointing everyone? And that, you know, if these individuals are up, we just get to re-up them on our own power? This is our decision, right?
Mr. Happy, happy to respond. Um, it's a great, it's a great question. So generally, when we're in the early part of the renewal process, which can take two or sometimes even three meetings worth of votes, it's generally candidates who are incumbents, who are seeking reappointment, that get considered in the early part of the process. Um, and the reason for that is because there's generally been some level of a relationship or communication between the board liaison, the chair of the particular committee, and that candidate. So, um, there's a familiarity and a willingness to recommend early on versus when new candidates come in. And we were getting candidates in, I think, as recently as last, well, I guess it would be the Friday before now. Um, generally, what will happen is the chairperson and the select board liaison will communicate with the candidates, understand their interests. Sometimes they attend a meeting, um, to be, uh, become familiar with, uh, what the committee might do, and then a recommendation can be made. So, uh, by no means, you know, should tonight's votes be considered to be final. And I'm just looking at the first one, I think we have five openings listed for conservation. We have one candidate who's been identified there. Um, there are, you know, additional openings, and I believe there are additional candidates who may, maybe have not been screened yet. So maybe that's why we're not seeing them. Um, I'll, I'll also say, we, we didn't intend to overwhelm the board by putting all the citizen activity forms in the packet, but we thought you ought to see them and be aware of them.
I honestly just, I, I don't, I, I would ask the board here not to put on any of these. And the reason I'd ask is because I want everyone who applied to be listed. And frankly, this, it, 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 town government is, is intended to have turnover, is intended to have people volunteer. Don't ask people to volunteer and then just, you know, rerun the incumbents. I think this is a terrible look. And I frankly, I would, I want this whole board to know who the people are coming forward for each position. And they should be recognized for wanting to volunteer. There, there is someone that put their citizen activity form three times over the last three years for a position. Seems like we're ignoring them.
Yeah, let me add some color. So I think on a rolling basis, Mr. Massey, we can add, I think these are more appointments to make sure that the store, we can still turn on the lights.
No, these, these appointments end in December.
But there, but there's, but there's others, but these are a consultation with, with the chairs of those committees. And then we bring them here. And it's not that others are being ignored, but in all fairness, everyone's a volunteer, so.
We, but I think that's exactly it is. You gotta get people there to want to volunteer.
But what I'm saying is.
Can't hold your little committee forever. You need to allow others into it for a different point of view. And frankly, I'm just saying, I just think there should be everyone that applied should be on it.
What I'm saying though, what I'm trying to say is that just because you apply doesn't mean you're good or not good for the, the role. And typically, members of the existing committee will recommend. And if that process hasn't happened yet, because they are volunteers who we can barely get because it's so time-consuming, we can't not take the ones that are already being recommended while we wait. Because sometimes also, um, I know that for certain assignments, I've chased people that have filled out a form for two months before they returned my call, and we can't, we can't stop. I, I know that personally, I can't speak for other people. I know personally that it's been like two months sometime, so we can't not vote on it. I appreciate what you're saying, though, I, I understand. But I, I feel that, I think we can get both things done, like you're saying. We can do this, but also, anyone that applies, uh, as soon as the chair of that committee or board, there's so many of them, gets to them and gets to the liaison, we can get them up here. And I think you've noticed, on a rolling basis, we have made appointments. So, uh, no, I pre, I appreciate your, your comment. Um, Mr. Goberdo, what were you gonna add?
I just wanted to add that we have any number of candidates for, um, boards, commissions, and committees that are appointed by the, the town administrator as well. So those are handled through a separate process. But you're seeing their citizen activity forms because they often cross over into, uh, select board appointments, so. Um, so there, so there's some number, it's probably not a huge number, but there's some number that may not actually be seeking, um, appointment here.
Mr. Chairman, if I might just comment on a couple of my liaison assignments, particularly Conservation Commission.
Would you wanna comment when we get to the vote?
Well, no, just to clarify, uh, I'll use that as specific. Um, you know, we put a call up for volunteers because we had, uh, since then, we had, uh, one long-term serving member who had resigned mid-year. And we have a long-term chair who now can no longer serve because of family situations and is going to be relocating. Um, so the two appointments that we're gonna be making, hopefully from this evening, one, we made an appointment last, last meeting to fill an unexpired term through December thirty-first of this year. And we'll be recommending the same gentleman for a full term. And then we recommending another new person, again, who hasn't served on the Conservation Commission, to serve a full term to the long-term serving, uh, long-term, uh, chair, uh, who won't be returning. The other people who have applied, a number of them, once they spoke with the chair, again, what I try to do is get people who have applied for the position to get in contact with either the chair or a member of the commission or board committee commission, to chat about what the responsibilities are, what the time commitments are.
Mr. O'Leary, how, how can they reach out, though, if, if?
Well, a lot of.
No, 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 so I'm just telling you, I'm just telling you what's, what's occurred.
I wasn't arguing with them, I was just simply having a conversation with them. Like, like any other motion that happens.
Yeah, yeah, no, so, so in this particular case, everybody that has been sought out and contacted, not all have returned the calls. Some of the ones who have returned the calls have opted out after speaking with the chair or the Conservation Agent because of the responsibilities, and they wouldn't be able to necessarily be the one they thought they could. Again, they were answering the call in the paper, saying, okay, you know, maybe I can volunteer for this and got some information then. So we have a couple of the people who applied have since withdrawn. Uh, and we have a couple of other people, like in this case with the Conservation Commission, we also have a couple of associate members. Some people don't want to volunteer if they don't have a vote. You know, so they say, if I'm gonna be an associate member and I can't vote, you know, I'll, I'll, I'll look for something else. So we've had those types of conversations too. So, uh, to my colleagues here this evening, I'd like to take care of the Conservation Commission and get that up and running and going because, again, we have one member who was just appointed at our last meeting. He needs to do a full term. And a long-term serving chair is gonna be leaving. And I'd like the other, get this other new person up and running and in communication more before the end of the year takes place. Um, you know, the case of Hillview Commission, there's always been interest in the Hillview Commission just because people think they can go all for free, and, uh, there's an interest in it. Uh, but again, we have a couple of incumbents here who have been doing a lot of heavy lifting to get us through in a deserving of reappointment. Um, again, Historic District Commission, that's one of, one of mine again. We're basically one applicant who's looking to return, and we still have a vacancy, we're still trying to find someone. And then those, some of those positions on that particular committee require certain specifications, like they have to live in the district or have a certain background, and we don't always have those applicants.
And also.
And again, Historical Commission, we have made several appointments over the last six months of new members because that Historical Commission was suffering. And the chair, Francine Coughlin, has done a wonderful job of recruiting people. We have filled it to capacity, and we have, um, we still have one more vacancy, but we have two returning incumbents who are looking to be reappointed. We've already added three new members. Um, so again, there's turnover, there's, uh, new blood, and there's some continuity here with people who've been willing to serve. So I can only speak to, to my liaison assignments. I'm ready to go tonight and feel comfortable that people have been contacted, uh, well-informed as to what the responsibilities are. And, um, so I, I would just like to move forward. I don't disagree, you know, if, if you wanna see the, the laundry list of people's names who are there. Uh, and it's been done both ways over the years. Some people, we have to kind of couch our remarks by saying, listen, your name is listed here. We only have two people that we can choose, or one to choose. Don't feel as though you're lost out. You know, we appreciate your stepping forward, we appreciate your, your volunteering. But either if they're incumbent or a new person that's gonna be appointed, you know, judge us by who we put on, not who we didn't put on. And those that didn't get put on didn't mean that they weren't worthy of consideration and wouldn't do a good job because they would, for the most part.
I'll also state that I, I have, after listening to liaison, not agreed, have not concurred. I mean, it's been, it's happened a couple of times the last five years when we've done this, where I just, uh, if I knew a little bit more, even though I wasn't liaison, if I knew more about the committee, I just didn't concur with the recommendation, and I just didn't concur, I mean.
Unfortunately, tonight is, uh, Mr. O'Leary, since you began, since you began speaking, I found nine Conservation Commission applications, and I'm only on page eighty-five of one forty-seven. So, um, in that eighty-five, just for context, starts at about sixty.
But some of those are, some of these, we have to keep these for three years, some of these are two or three years old.
I understand. What I'm getting at is the community wants to volunteer, and we're putting it out that, out there that it's available. And, and frankly, we're taking it away from it.
Are there gonna still be four openings?
Mr. Chair, sorry, I waited, uh, for quite a bit.
Hold on a second, I, I just wanted, is there gonna still be four openings after this?
There will be.
It says five.
I will be recommend, by the way.
Well, hold on, hold on, I, just a simple question. It says there's five openings, we have one name. Will there still be four openings after this?
That includes associate members.
That includes associates. So meaning, some of these applications that Mr. Massey is, uh, discussing, they, they will have to discussion. Somebody has to get put on here.
Someone has to become a full, we've got two full voting members that need to be appointed. Two full memberships, and then the remainder, uh, associate memberships. And again, the associate memberships, I'm not recommending that we fill the associate memberships this evening.
Time out. I, I get what everyone's saying, and I think everyone's point was made. Because I think Mr. Massey had a good point that we have to, we, we need a combination of everything, right? Um, you need, you need to consider people coming in. Maybe the question more is, can we speed up that process? Cause that's what I.
I mean, as far as liaisons, Mr. Chair, I, I've volunteered for more liaison spots twice. And, and you're getting the liaison's recommendation, but he's a part of fourteen different committees, so.
But as vice-chair, he's also, but we're not, hold on, time out. We got, it's not the liaison.
It's, it's not, it's, you're, you're not, it's right. It, Mr. Chair and Mr. O'Leary have, have you thought of increasing committees? I mean, have you thought of saying, hey, instead of a five-person committee, let's have seven. As long as we have an odd number, we can vote. What's, what's the harm in that?
So, some committees are statutorily.
Statutorily, where?
State statute requires a certain number of membership in some committees. Other committees, we do have seven members, the finest committee has, you know, nine members. Again, we'll be fine over the sustainability committee.
Well, hold on, I think that's a, well, good, good point. But hold on, that's a broader discussion, we're getting away from the agenda item. So tonight's agenda item is to vote for these motions for these candidates that were vetted by the chairs of the committees.
The other point.
Unfortunately, I'm, I'm gonna vote no on all.
The, the other point is, Mr. Chairman, is that, is that these committees have to function after July first. That's why we do the appointments the first week of December.
That's fine, but let, let just, we're gonna stick to the agenda item to vote. I've already also said, Mr. Massey, that in the past, there's been people I have voted for. So it's not, but where we, we have to get through these so that we can operate. And there, I think most of these, there's more open spots, so we're gonna be voting on more of these as the chairs of those committees, which are also volunteers in our community, get around to it. But again, we can't go to any of these chairs and say, hey, we're in a rush on the select board, you need to, you need to get these people on the phone and get these names in front of the liaison. Like, I can't ask that of these chairs.
I understand, Mr. Chair. I, I understand, and unfortunately, my positions, that I think the process was wrong. We solicited it multiple times. And what we're doing is we're saying, thank you so much, your, your deadline was Friday, everyone crunched it in. Cause I know people did crunch it in to get it in by Friday. And it's really all for, it, it wasn't for much.
But you think there's an entry?
Not being considered. Unfortunately, Mr. Chair, I'm gonna be voting no on all these.
That's fine.
And I'd like to make clear to the public that these are great people right here. It hurts me to vote against them, join these committees, and this is nothing against them, it's against the process. And I think that it starts with us to fix it here.
So, Mr. Massey, I have a question, though. Do you think it's reasonable for volunteers to drop everything and get to somebody's application that was submitted on Friday? I'm just asking that question because you're a volunteer too.
I'm a volunteer.
We set the deadlines. Yes, but that, that, a deadline is to get it in, not that they're, we're gonna consider it right away. I'm sorry, I'm gonna get to it.
Well, we've got considerations from two thousand and twenty-one. I mean, we've got two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four applications, and we're like, yeah.
But some people.
I think, I think.
Hold on, no, no, you know what?
They're making the wrong assumption that these people haven't been contacted, even since two thousand and twenty.
So I'm gonna let Mr. Goberdo speak, and then we're gonna vote. We're gonna go with the motions. Mr. Goberdo.
So just a couple of things off, the, the date's important, two thousand and twenty-one. So the board has a policy that it will hold on file any application for three years. So we hold those applications and we provide them to the board. And the second thing is, this is very much a decentralized process. We're the, we're the intake spot, we do the outreach to try to get the applications, and then we're distributing them to, um, the respective committees and the liaisons to be reviewed. We're not necessarily part of that review process. And, um, and so that makes it hard for us to sort of stay on top of things. Though what we have found works is trying to address these, um, on a, on a rolling basis. Um, what I've also found is, a lot of times, that conversation will happen between the chair of a committee and the candidate or the liaison and the candidate. And the candidate is basically withdrawn from consideration, but we don't, that never gets back to us. And sometimes that happens as well. So there is some number in here that has been impacted by that, I couldn't tell you what it is. Um, but I, the thing I just can't stress enough is, it is a very decentralized process managed between the committee and the liaison. That's all, thank you.
Mr. Massey, can I please have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'll move to place the nomination. Following name for reappointment is a full member to the Conservation Commission for term to expire.
term to expire on December 31st, 2027, George Gaglani, incumbent. I think we just appointed him a couple of weeks ago.
Last week. That last meeting, we appointed him to an unexpired term which expires in three weeks, December 31st, 2024.
How about we second the motion and now further discussion?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. O'Leary. I will liaison.
Okay, again, this gentleman, we appointed in our last meeting to fill a vacancy, which expires December 31st and then the intent is to renew this appointment now for a full term, which starts January 1st. In addition to that, and what did we do with Elizabeth Decker?
Full.
Full member, okay. So there'll be another, another motion.
She's new.
What's that?
She's new.
Right, she's new.
Reappointed, reappointment.
So again, I would urge, as I did last meeting, the appointment of Mr. Gaglani, full membership.
And for discussion for Mr., for this, we'll call Mr. O'Leary.
George Gaglani.
Mr. Wallner.
George Gaglani.
Mr. Massey.
Gepstein.
Gepstein.
No, it's not Gepstein, it's not.
There's no, there's no no, it's a vote called.
It's either the name or the not, or Gepstein.
So that means no, if you don't say it. And George Gaglani, excuse me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Massey, can I please have the next motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to place the nomination, following name for appointment as a full member to the Conservation Commission for a term to expire on December 31st, 2027.
Second.
Time out.
Elizabeth Decker.
It's an associate though.
No, it's not associate.
Elizabeth Decker.
That was a typo.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Massey.
The change of this before, full membership. And again, new appointment, new member, someone who's part of the group.
Yeah, but was, was the other eight, you know?
In consultation with the, again, spoken with the chair, the vice chair and the conservation agent, along with interviews of other candidates.
Did you, by two weeks ago? Two weeks ago was like last, you know, you had all these interviews over the last couple of weeks, Mr. O'Leary?
Between the, between the chair, Mr. Sanchez, self, and Lydia, yes.
Okay. Did you say so?
And again, a couple of people have not responded. Some people have withdrawn and other people are still looking for, and again, some of the people are still looking to hear from. And again, we consider for associate membership, there's no associate members being put forth this evening. This is the bigger full complement to the Conservation Agent, Conservation Commission, I'm sorry.
Mr. O'Leary.
Elizabeth Decker.
Mr. Wallner.
Elizabeth Decker.
Mr. Massey. And the chair is Elizabeth Decker. Processing service and constables. Mr. Massey, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move to place the nomination, the following name for reappointment as a process-serving constable for a term to expire on December 31st, 2025, Douglas Laff, incumbent.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. O'Leary. In common, in the constables.
I believe Mrs. Gonzalez might be the liaison.
Yes, okay.
That was actually, I think Mr. Massey is.
No, I think.
Mr. Massey is process-serving constable.
No, hadn't been invited to a meeting, I wouldn't know.
They don't have meetings.
They don't have meetings.
That was your liaison.
No, no, he's not saying it, it's just that, that's the list, they don't have meetings.
What should I do as a liaison to the constables, Mr. O'Leary?
Again, we had.
I think it's just.
I'm sorry, Mr. O'Leary, through you, Mr. Chair. What roles should I take as a liaison to the constables?
Well, we had three people listed. One person indicated that they didn't want to be reappointed. The second one were awaiting, it says here, awaiting application, but expressed an interest in our another. So what you do is you call them up, you reach out, have them say they're going to do it, would like to do it, what's your background?
I'm the committee.
What's that? There is no committee, this is not a committee.
I'm the chair.
Process-serving constables are not a committee.
I get, I get it, but I've got to understand, Mr. O'Leary, not 33 years here. I don't know what to do as a liaison, so the same thing with running municipal. I wasn't connected by the talent to running municipal at all, I had to.
Reach out to the general manager myself.
Mr. Goberto.
You can mentor me along too, I'll take that.
Mr. Chairman, through you. I don't think the board should vote on this because Mr. Massey has recognized the liaison. He has not made a recommendation at this point. He's not even been afforded the opportunity to make a recommendation at this point. So I think this vote should be passed over.
Well, I definitely agree with you. That's all. Mr. Massey, you can move to cultural council.
I'll withdraw my second.
Okay, I forgot here, sorry. This is more procedural work, 33 years does come in that. Withdraw the second and then Mr. O'Leary withdraws the motion.
Mr. Massey can withdraw his motion at this point.
Mr. Massey, can you withdraw? Thank you.
Real quick before we go on, if I'm allowed.
Please.
Is there any reason why we didn't put all the appointments on here, all the committees?
Yeah, because I'm not ready to do TBA, that'll be next two weeks.
Is that the only one that was kept off?
That's the main one for me, that, so, but that's why usually, just because the liaison hasn't gotten to it.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I move to place the nomination, the following names for reappointment as full members to the cultural council for terms to expire on December 31st, 2027. Francis Tomiguzzo, incumbent.
Tomiguzzo, good.
Nice Italian. Rebecca Griffin, incumbent.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. Wallner.
Yep. And that's, cultural council has a number of positions. Francis is currently the chair and will continue on, is my understanding. And Rebecca Griffin has served in many committees and has joined the cultural council, cultural council recently and would be a good, continue on her term.
Any further discussion?
We've added to this committee just last meeting, right? Yeah. So again, some of these have vacancies and we've been filling it throughout the year, which is great.
Yep. Mr. O'Leary.
Francis Tomiguzzo and Rebecca Griffin.
Mr. Wallner.
Francis Tomiguzzo.
Rebecca Griffin. Mr. Massey. Pass. And the chair is Francis Tomiguzzo and Rebecca Griffin. Your relation. Just asking.
Mr. Chairman, I move to place the nomination, the following names for reappointment as full members to the Hillview Commission for terms to expire on December 31st, 2027. George Stack, incumbent.
Louis Defronzo, incumbent. Second.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. O'Leary. Mr. O'Leary.
Mr. Stack, I think everybody knows, has been the longtime chair of the Hillview Commission, the anchor of the team and has been holding the fort down there and been a tremendous steward for the community since inception and the respect that he commands by his commission, and again, the commission has changed over the years. He's been a long-serving chair, continues to be chair of the commission and I would recommend reappointment. And Mr. Defronzo's been a long time, not a long time, but probably six years, six years. He serves as the, basically attorney, resident attorney on the commission and has been providing pro bono work for the community for a number of years, heads up a number of projects, ongoing projects with the, with the commission and again, is certainly worthy of our consideration of reappointment.
Any further discussion? During none. Mr. O'Leary.
George Stack, Louis Defronzo.
Mr. Wallner.
George Stack, Louis Defronzo.
Mr. Massey. And the chair is George Stack, Louis Defronzo.
Mr. Chairman, I move to place the nomination, the following names for reappointment as full members to the Historical Commission for terms to expire December 31st, 2027. Christopher Hayden, incumbent. Les Masterson, incumbent.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. O'Leary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, Mr. Hayden and Mr. Masterson both have been long-serving members of the commission. Again, the commission has been, well, these two members have been active members for a number of years here, even when it was relatively inactive due to a number of vacancies, unable to fill it. And since Francine has taken over, I think the board has filled probably three, maybe four positions on the commission this year. Again, Mr. Hayden and Mr. Masterson have been assisting and holding it together over the years and certainly maintain an interest as we saw them just this weekend volunteering the historical buildings downtown and I would recommend their reappointments.
So nothing further? Mr. O'Leary.
Christopher Hayden, Les Masterson.
Mr. Wallner.
Mr. Hayden, Les Masterson.
Mr. Massey.
Pass.
The chair is Christopher Hayden, Les Masterson. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I move to place the nomination, the following name for reappointment as a full member to the Historic District Commission for a term to expire on December 31st, 2026. Four openings. William Burke Meyer, incumbent.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. O'Leary.
And again, Mr. Burke Meyer has been a member of the Historic District Commission. Again, very specific as to what their charges, which is to look at around the common area of Centertown, Bill Centertown. Some of the requirements of some of the positions there require certain professional backgrounds. I know that Mr. Page is working hard to solicit other people, because we do have other openings on there, but Mr. Burke Meyer has been serving in this capacity and expressed an interest to continue and has been serving well for a number of years. We appreciate his efforts and is willing to stay with us. So I would recommend William Burke Meyer. And we will continue to try and solicit requisite people to serve in the District Commission.
Mr. O'Leary.
William Burke Meyer.
Mr. Wallner.
William Burke Meyer.
Mr. Massey.
Pass.
And the chair is William Burke Meyer.
Mr. Chairman, I move to place the nomination, the following name for reappointment as a full member to the Martins Pond Study Committee for a term to expire on December 31st, 2026. Two openings. George Canjiano, incumbent.
Do you want a second? Two openings, I think there's only one, there's only one opening, so.
This, I mean, this happens for a number, number of times. We've got multiple openings, but less people here. That's why I kept saying.
I believe, fully. Anyway, George, well, I can recommend George. George is the chair, has been doing a great job.
Hold on, you have a second.
Sorry, second.
Yeah, I see.
He did say a second. Okay, yeah. So George has been the chair for this group for some time. The pond has never looked better, very proactive, helped to get a budget created to support the pond. George wanted to sit down as chair, nobody else has filled that spot, so he's going to, he's going to continue to stay with the group as chair going forward and look back on.
Mr. O'Leary.
George Canjiano.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Is this committee, do they spend taxpayer dollars, is there money allocated to the Martins Pond Study?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Over the past nine years, I think there've been three warrant articles for invasive weed control or similar efforts that are partially overseen by the committee and partially overseen by the engineering office and Department of Public Works.
Yeah, just clarification, what we did a few years back, we had warrant articles, so they were just monies for a specific study or a specific treatment and we put it in the DPW budget now, didn't we put?
I don't think we ended up being able to do so.
I thought we were going to put like $25,000 in, but anyway, there's some ongoing treatment, which has worked marvelously well for the pond. I mean, it hasn't been this, looking as good in decades and much to the effort of the Martins Pond, the Reclamation Committee, Study Committee. It's a variation, so George has done a great job of spearheading this moving it forward. There's like $25,000 in there. It is spent over several years. It's not all at once. A small amount of money.
No worries, just cares. Thank you.
Mr. Goberto.
Just to clarify, quoting Centertown Clerk's website, there is one term that's coming due, it is Mr. Canjiano and I'm not seeing any other vacancies, so it may be a misprint. It's a two vacancies.
We just filled.
Yeah, two vacancies. Yep. Oh yeah, we did fill.
Okay. Mr. O'Leary.
George Canjiano.
Mr. Wallner.
George Canjiano.
Mr. Massey.
Pass.
And George Canjiano, the chair.
Mr. Chairman, I move to place the nomination, the following name for reappointment as a full member to the Mobile Home Rent Control Board for a term to expire on December 31st, 2027. One opening for Lydia Real Costa, who's an incumbent.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. O'Leary.
The, just, sorry, my liaison probably first, go ahead.
No, no, somebody would recommend it, but.
Oh, okay, I was just going to say, is this a one-person board?
No, it's a three-person board and she's the only applicant at this particular time, so feel free to support her. Again, we always have a hard time and for the public's information and maybe Mr. Massey's too, we have two mobile home part areas which are subject to rent control, which was put in probably about 20 years ago because there's some efforts on the part of sort of property owners there to increase rates substantially in order to force these people out. And the town meeting actually took action, the board, and town meeting took action to put a rent control board in so that if they want to increase the rent on these units, I think it's about total of maybe four units total in town, you know? They're the only ones that are subject to rent control, that the property owners have to go before the rent control board in order to substantiate the request for increase, which they were granted in this past year to do so. But this is the only applicant and we appreciate her willingness to serve and I would recommend.
This wasn't one of the ones picked to offer.
No, again, not flashy, not flashy but important, one that's needed. Then we may have one other opening, we have one other opening on the rent control board because Mr. Brown, who was moved out of town last year, so I believe we still have one opening on, after we make this appointment.
I'll join.
On the rent control board. That's it?
I'll join.
I don't know if we can. Check into it.
We'll check into it.
Yeah, we'll check into it.
Next page, I see Rich Wong.
I think some are.
For nomination.
No, some are. Like, for example, that's kind of like the chair and vice chair is part of the CIPC.
I think.
You can check.
There was a, there was a time, and again, I can verify this from personal experience, where I served both as a member of the Hillview Commission and the select board and then as a matter of policy, the board decided that it probably wasn't a good idea, other than if we were liaison or a voting liaison on some things, that we wouldn't do that. And then there were, there were certain conflict of interest laws whereby if the Hillview Commission say budget came before the board, I couldn't participate in both capacities, I would have to recuse myself.
Well, why would we just?
But we don't have much.
We'll just check on it.
In this particular case, but we can check on it. But anyway, in the meantime, in the meantime, don't let it go.
Martins Pond Reclamation and Taxation Aid.
For Mr. Wallner.
From Mr. Wallner. I'm just saying, Martins Pond Reclamation, you brought up your situation before.
I'm just seeing a familiarity with Taxation.
Yeah, the Taxation Aid Committee, yeah.
And, and Martins Pond Reclamation.
But his term is co-terminous with his term on the board. Whereas mine at the time was not. It weren't co-terminous. So it's like, so when we have, we have members of the board as voting members, what we do is we make a co-terminus.
I have a solve. I have a solve. We will just get a list of committees that are out there that Select Board members can apply to be on. See? Problem solved. Mr. O'Leary?
Yes, okay, but again, they don't meet very often.
No, no, no.
No, no, I'm just saying, rent control board does not meet very often. They only meet when the property owners.
Not just ignoring my question.
What's that?
What are we ignoring?
No, I just brought up your situation. I'm just wondering if Martins Pond or the Taxation Aid, if that's the same thing. If not, I can probably.
Again, maybe what, the solution may be with the Taxation Aid Committee, Mr. Wallner's term is co-terminous with his term on the board. Because we had previous board members who either didn't get reelected or didn't seek reelection, or didn't get reelected to the board and ended up refusing to step down from their assignments, like a liaison assignment as a voting member when the term expired or when the person was not reelected.
I thought you mentioned that when you were on the board and Hillview Commission.
They changed.
We changed as a matter of policy, first of all. And again, I didn't.
I think we're going.
But anyway.
Hold on, no, closing that rabbit hole. For the Mobile Rent Control Board. Any other discussion particularly for Lydia Real Costa?
Oh, let's do it. Lydia Real Costa.
Lydia Real Costa.
Mr. Massey? And the chair is Lydia Real Costa. Sustainability Committee, please, Mr. Massey, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I move to place the nomination of following names for reappointment as full members to the Sustainability Committee for terms to expire December thirty-first, 2027. One opening. John Rogers, Bruce McCardle, and Debra Pascal.
Mr. Wallner?
Still one more opening on the committees?
We're renewing them, right?
Both second?
Second.
Sorry, here, sorry.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. O'Leary.
We're renewing these.
Yeah, we, we just, we just did away with their indefinite terms, and this is just a succession of.
Yeah, okay, extending their term for three years.
Putting them on terms.
Yeah, yeah.
So, so it's all three?
No, what we did is we voted here, they're not indefinite terms.
So we're voting for all three?
Because we changed that, we have to reappoint. We kind of undid it, correct?
Right, because some of them ended at the end of the year.
Okay.
Some of them are two years and three years.
It's all three, just the same exact thing we already voted on?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so, yeah, I mean, Sustainability Committee is, is growing. It's, it's very active, has a lot of responsibilities. Yes, all three of these people are good people to have on board, especially John Rogers, who's been leading it and doing a fantastic job of, of leading that group and defining objectives.
Mr. O'Leary?
John Rogers, Bruce McCardle, Debra Pascal.
Mr. Wallner?
John Rogers, Bruce McCardle, Debra Pascal.
Mr. Massey? And the chair is John Rogers, Bruce McCardle, Debra Pascal.
Mr. Chairman, I move to place the nomination of following names for reappointment as full members to the Taxation Aid for a term to expire. Gail Manning for December thirty-first, 2027, and Rich Walner for May sixth, 2025.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. O'Leary. Further discussion?
Yep, Gail Manning has, you know, as I've pointed out in the past, she was significant in bringing forward the CBA match program that we now have in place. And I'm happy to continue that work to create a formal program to help out, especially our senior citizens who are most vulnerable.
Mr. O'Leary?
Gail Manning, December thirty-first, 2027, Rich Walner, May sixth, 2025.
Mr. Wallner?
Rich Walner and Gail Manning.
Mr. Massey?
Gail Manning.
And the chair is Gail Manning, Rich Walner. And, like motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move to place the nomination of following name for appointment as an associate member of the Veterans Event Committee for a term expiring December thirty-first, 2026. Two openings, one candidate. Michelle Reed, Associate.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. O'Leary. I believe Veterans Event Committee is Mrs. Gonzalez?
Who is W.
Correct, so.
I assume she confirmed.
Did she submit it? Did she, she submitted this, correct?
She confirmed.
She confirmed, okay, that's what I thought. I just wanted reconfirmation from you. So, okay, well.
Can I just make a recommendation to this board that, you know, just to avoid why I brought up why I'm saying no, you know? Maybe we should get in writing from the chairs to the town, to whoever the liaison, their recommendations. Because, you know, outside of that, it goes, you know, I think it's important for a chair to put in writing, I recommend X, and I recommend Y, and the reasons why are X, Y, and Z. And that could be included in the packet for us to review.
Mr. Wallner?
So twice I've had to visit our guidelines for two different reasons regarding liaisons and committee assignments and everything else like that. It is written down. You can find that. I would encourage you to go find that, look at that. And, you know, if you think there's suggestions that would apply to make it better, then you should bring forward to the board suggestions to make it better. But I think that the first step is to do your homework. Go look at what's been written down.
Can you, can you just tell me what's written down?
It's, it's, it's like this.
Right here. What are you getting at? I don't even know.
My point is that, my point is that you're asking for changes. What I'm encouraging you to do is go and look at what we currently already have documented down. There are very specific procedures about how we handle this, so I'm encouraging you to go look at that, and then after you've studied that, make suggestions, like I have in the past.
He, he just made a suggestion which is not unreasonable. I mean, there's, I, I think, and I understand, I think, I, I think it would have just a, a proper, let's look at the current guidelines and then propose different, again, outside of this agenda item, I think that, that would have sufficed, so I'll, I'll just, I'll do that.
Yeah, I'm just encouraging a path to get it done, that's all.
I'm encouraging another one.
See?
There you go.
Multiple paths. Just like you can get to North Riddick from ninety-five and ninety-three. Okay, so, Mr. O'Leary?
Michelle Reed.
Oh, we're making this recommendation even though my aunt's not here.
The, Mrs. McNeil confirmed, she got confirmation from Mrs. Gonzalez. Mr. Wallner?
Michelle Reed.
Mr. Massey? And the chair is Michelle Reed.
Mr. Chairman, I move to place the nomination of following name for appointment as a full member of the Veterans Event Committee for a term expiring December thirty-first, 2025. One opening, Roberta Sanchez, full.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. O'Leary. Mrs. McNeil, just for the record, so this was also confirmed, by Mrs. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Okay.
This afternoon.
Okay. Further discussion? No, Mr. O'Leary?
Roberta Sanchez.
Mr. Wallner?
Who is it again? I'm sorry.
Roberta Sanchez.
Roberta Sanchez.
Mr. Massey? And the chair is Roberta Sanchez.
Mr. Chairman, I move to reappoint Susan Duplin as the State Ethics Commission Liaison for a term to expire on December thirty-first, 2025.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. O'Leary, Mr. Gobertow?
I just want to offer that the next two are statutory positions that are part of a person's either responsibilities or in fact their job title. So the Town Clerk, Susan Duplin, part of her responsibilities are to serve as our liaison for State Ethics Commission Blade Percises. And then in the case of the Town Treasurer Collector, Mrs. McKay, she is appointed as collector by myself, but as treasurer by the Select Board again. And I'm recommending both for appointment. And to the extent there was any sort of solicitation or candidates for either of those positions, neither, neither were vacant nor were we seeking anybody to be appointed.
Thank you. Mr. O'Leary?
Susan Duplin.
Mr. Wallner?
Susan Duplin.
Mr. Massey?
Pass.
The chair is Susan Duplin.
Mr. Chairman, I move to reappoint Mary Ann McKay as Town Treasurer for a term to expire on December thirty-first, 2025.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. O'Leary. Further discussion? Mr. O'Leary?
Mary Ann McKay.
Mr. Wallner?
Mary Ann McKay.
Excuse me. Mr. Massey? And the chair is Mary Ann McKay.
The, the Town Treasurer, is that, that's not a paid position by the town?
It is.
Oh, okay.
So full-time.
Oh, we're reappointed every year?
You do. You, similar to Town Council, actually. Which I know we weren't.
We thought it was just an internal employee.
So she is an employee. She has two positions, treasurer, collector. It's a combined job. The collector portion, she's appointed by myself, the treasurer by the select.
Go ahead, Mr. Gobertow, next item.
We are on to a Select Board policy for utility installations. This is a second reading of a policy that was reviewed at the last board meeting. Again, not to preclude the board from necessarily voting in favor of or against any application to cite such a facility in the future. That's a decision the board would need to make based on any particular application. This does provide policies under which an application would need to be submitted. We would ask the board to consider. To the extent that there are any specific lingering questions that the board would like me to seek answers for, I'm happy to try to do that as well. Other than that, the vote will be adopted and to incorporate it into policy.
Questions? Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the second reading.
Thank you, Mr. Massey. Did anybody have any questions? I mean, I guess we could, okay, go ahead, Mr. Massey, sorry.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the second reading of the utility installations and small miles facilities policies to incorporate said policy as Section seven, one point five of the policies of the Select Board.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Mr. Massey, you can move on in a minute. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the regular session minutes for the November thirteenth, twenty twenty-four strategic planning.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
For the November eighteenth meeting minutes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to recommend kicking those to the next meeting, please?
What does that give us timeline-wise?
This meeting is November eighteenth, your next meeting is November sixteenth, so that would be thirty days, I believe.
Oh, okay.
I think again, trying to, I think you'd be within thirty days, I think you'd be.
Yes, so I'm gonna grant the request.
I don't think these minutes remain available in draft until they're in packing.
Okay, perfect.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the regular session minutes for the November twenty-second, twenty twenty-four meeting.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Wasn't that the night? Mr. Gobertow?
So to, to the extent that members have.
You never know, you never know, Mrs. McNeil. That's, that's a, that's a good question.
To the extent there were any changes that board members wanted to suggest, we encourage you to submit them to Mrs. McNeil. We'll get them circulated in draft form. Mr. Chairman, through you, just two things of note. First is that we continue to inch along with progress on the Haverhill-Chesnut Street intersection. Folks have probably seen the final pavings in place, the curb alignments in place. The basis where mast arms are in place, but we still do not expect them to be delivered until at least February, if not later. There will be line painting that will be happening during the course of the middle of the day tomorrow, but the disruption is not expected to require a closure. It'll just become a one-lane traffic during the middle of the day, so we're happy to hopefully be able to continue to make progress over there. And the second thing, just for the board's information, we're looking at the staffing for the Fire Department. One of the things that was included in the last collective bargaining agreement approved by the board a few weeks ago is the creation of position of the rank of lieutenant. So the first step in that is to call for an exam for that rank, which is something I'll be signing off on in the coming days. Does not make any sort of an appointment or promote anybody, but it starts a process for that so that we can align with what our, our goals are, which is roughly one year's time from now to be looking to be making such appointments and promotions. So we'll continue to move in that direction of the staffing in the Fire Department as we've been discussing the past couple of years. And that concludes my conference. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Do we have a final motion?
Chair, I move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. O'Leary. Further discussion?
I think it's Mrs. Gonzalez. We usually go a lot later when she's here.
No, no, I mean, no, we're not gonna pin that one on her. Sorry, bye. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.